Okay, I will call to order meeting of the Wilsonville City Council work session at 5:24 PM on Monday, December 20th. And we will start with a review of items, the agenda and items on consent. Has everyone looked at that and does anyone have any comments or reasons to change that? Okay, hearing none?
Hi, I do have one question.
Oh, excuse me, sorry, Councilwoman Lindell.
It's okay. I was kind of slow with my hand up there. Really, a question for staff, I believe. The consent includes the minutes from our last meeting, which I was able to attend the work session but not the rest of the meeting. Is it appropriate then for me to abstain from that item?
Council President Agrival, the minutes are of the board and not of the individuals, so if you wish to vote on those, you are able to.
Okay. Thank you.
And did I, as I read those, I meant to go back and check, did it appropriately record that you were at the work session in the minute?
Your Honor, the work session notes are not brought to the council meeting, it's just the city council minutes.
Right, we just have the minutes, okay. Okay, so we're okay with that, so we'll move on to councillor concerns. Does anyone have any concerns? Councillor Wresz.
I have a concern, I keep getting phone calls, I've got two now, about residents hoping that we can better time our traffic lights. I know, Brian, we talked about it briefly, I didn't know if we got any word back on that, but they feel like if they were timed a little more in sync, then the traffic would move more freely. I don't know what goes into that, I don't know, maybe it's a county level issue. I know sometimes when you're downtown, it's like you hit it just right, like you can just go, go, and go. I know some other communities that really get dialed in on how they time those lights to help traffic move. I know that around 3:00 to 4:30 today, I was still driving around and getting my kids places, and it took a long time to get from like Wilsonville and through kind of the center of, from Villavod through the center of Wilsonville. And so I didn't know if there's a way that we could get creative to maybe improve traffic through improving our timing, so that's my concern.
So I would like to ask the city manager and Public Works to take that on. Councillor Lehan, do you have a related comment?
Yes, not like this has not come up before in the past. ODOT controls everything within so many signals of our, of their facility, which is, of course, Interstate 5. So they control those, the timing, and they can change them in a heartbeat.
Well, thank you.
Their priority is keeping Interstate 5 moving. They are not very concerned at all about our local streets. So.
All right, thank you. And I believe we do have some input from staff. Mr. Montalvo, I believe that's who is behind the mound.
Good evening, councillors and mayor. Martin Montalvo, Public Works Operations Manager. Councillor Lehan was correct, ODOT does control the ones that are basically border along the interstate. The other signals are managed by the county. There's currently a project that they're finishing right now that will upgrade the controllers in the next year, so that we have better communications amongst the county-controlled signals, so that we're able to employ what's called an intelligent traffic system, and they'll be able to time and coordinate them better. Currently, they do not speak to one another outside of the ones currently controlled by ODOT. We'll give you an update as that project progresses, probably in the next year.
Wow, okay, thank you.
And can I just add, I mean, for our citizens' understanding, we understand why this is that ODOT controls those signals, because their job is to empty the interstate, empty those exit ramps, because they cannot have cars backing up into the travel lanes. That's a deadly situation. So it's an annoyance for us, it is a deadly situation out on Interstate 5. And that's the reason that Donald is so high on the priority list, because they are regularly backing that ramp up into the travel lane on I-5. So we can, you know, complain and grumble about it, but we also still understand, we don't want to kill people out there. So that's the situation with ODOT.
Thank you for that perspective. Thank you, Mr. Montalvo. Okay. There's always, I wanted to, I don't think I have any other councillor concerns, we have a lot on our agenda. Anyone else have anything to bring up? Okay, thank you. We will now go into the pre-council work session, starting with Public Works Complex Financing Plan with Ms. Kerber.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Dolores Kerber, Public Works Director. Let me do, whoops. All right. So tonight, here presenting some information about options for Public Works Financing Plan, for the Public Works Complex Financing Plan. This project was identified as a priority in the 2019-21 council work plan. So, a little bit about need of the project. The Public Works Department Core Services provides the operation and maintenance of water, wastewater, stormwater, roads, rideaway, and we also do emergency management for the city. Currently, our administration offices are in the Public Works Police Building, just a sec, oh, just move it down there. And down here, as well as, we have several sites around the city where we keep our equipment and materials. We're down at Three Bay, in Memorial Park, the Memorial Maintenance Barn, we're over at Smart Fleet, out here at Two's Barn, which is actually a future water reservoir site, and up at the Elxen Reservoir. Down here at Three Bay, we are there under a conditional use permit that expires back in 2029. So the decentralization of all of our facilities, as well as the distance between them, makes our day-to-day operations inefficient. In addition, that there is seismic vulnerability for all of these various buildings that we are, or areas that we are using. So, the existing warehouse storage and equipment yards that we are using are very inadequate in both their allocation of space, as well as the associated structures and facilities, and the overall location. None of these areas were specifically designed to be used for public worksite or a facility. So the solution to improve the ability for us to deliver our core services is to build a new seismically resilient Public Works complex that will consolidate our office, warehouse, storage, equipment yards, all on one secure property site. So here are a few actions to date, I won't go through them, but we started back in, you know, 2008 with using Three Bay, but this all got kicked off in 2015 with the Facility Master Plan. And as, we brought it all the way up to here, October of this year, where we have now received official land use approval for moving forward with the Public Works complex. It's located on Beauburg Road. As we were designing this complex, we were looking at how the function and efficiency influenced the layout and the materials that we use to help us better provide our core services. We looked at a 20-year-plus growth of our facility, and with options for future expansion on the site. So we did a program analysis, looking at what are our essential needs and what is it appropriate scaling. The administration building that we are going to construct will meet the seismic design category four, which is criteria for an essential facility. And it'll help ensure that we can remain operational during and after a major disaster. This is also important, because, this is important, because Public Works are first responders. Additionally, in this new building, will be the city's backup IT network, which then also will provide us some redundancy in the city. The council goal has been to strive to make any new city building a LEED certified. So what we did is we took LEED criteria, along with the Green Globe standards, and created a unique sustainability checklist for this facility, to ensure that we were being very conscientious with all that we, how we move forward with the design. Per the state requirement, all new buildings over $5 million need to incorporate green energy technology, equivalent to 1.5% of the total construction cost. For this particular project, what we're looking at is using solar panels on the warehouse roof. And then we will take the energy derived from the solar panels and feed it back into the grid to get credit on our electricity bill. And of course, since this is a Public Works facility, we really thought about making sure that everything that is designed and constructed will be very durable and very maintainable. So, some key features of the complex that we're looking at is how we're going to bring everything onto one location. There will be a fenced yard that will provide secure stores for city equipment. Since we purchased the most equipment and supplies for the city, anything from toilet paper through water meters, we will have now a centralized warehouse to be able to keep all of those materials at one location. The seismically resilient administration building will house both a publicly accessible conference room, as well as a new energy coordination center. The emergency coordination center will also double as a large conference room that can be divided into two, and can be used for public, I'm sorry, for city staff to be able to do training. We'll have a de-camp facility on site, and the de-camp facility is where you take spoils from the vacuum truck out of the stormwater, or things that you pick up off the street, you take it there, you de-water it before you haul it to a landfill. We also will have truck washing facilities with spray hose and equipment cleaning, and then a secure chemical storage location, as well as some tanks to be able to hold our sodium magnchloride de-icing material. All right. So here's kind of a quick overview of the facility, starting with the administration building here, just off of Beauburg Road. It's about a little 17 and a half, 17,68 square feet, a seismically resilient building, with offices for staff. We have four crew rooms for the respective operational divisions, locker rooms, a drying room, a break room, the backup servers, as I mentioned, for the city, as well as the multipurpose emergency coordination center. The plaza between the administration building and the warehouse is twofold. One is, well, a walkway between the two buildings, but also it's part of our stormwater system. This is part of a stormwater facility that we have there, and it'll help us meet the green space requirement for the site. As you can see, we have a lot of asphalt, so we needed to bring in our green space. Over here, we have a warehouse, and as I mentioned, that there's a future expansion, so there's a little outline here of how we could expand the warehouse. We could expand in the future the administration building here as well. So this warehouse, just a little under 20,000 square feet, is where we'll be able to store our equipment, our vehicles, we'll have woodworking shop, a paint shop, assigned storage area, as well as our water quality lab, all in there. Here's the de-camp facility for the de-watering area. Here's our wash building for vehicles and equipment. Here's where the chemical storage will be. We also have bins out here, some covered and uncovered, for various rocks, gravel, and other materials that we would need to have on hand. And over here is where the employees would park for the building itself. A little overview perspective here, that we have, here's Beauburg Road, and then there's an access road that we will be sharing with Old Castle Manufacturing, which is back here. With the circulation of the site is that city vehicles, as well as deliveries, would come in off the access road, go through the yard, and exit back over here to Beauburg. For the public, they would come in and access and exit here off of the access road into the public parking lot. And city staff would come through here to get into the staff parking area. We thought long and hard about how we would have the traffic flows to help minimize the conflict between the various types of traffic. This is an elevation view of the administration building, as seen from Beauburg Road. This is a tilt-up concrete building, which will give us the seismic stability that we're looking for, to meet the essential facility criteria of a category four, so we can remain operational during an emergency. In fact, this will be our first seismically rated city facility that we could use as an emergency coordination center in case of an emergency, as well as if we needed for other facilities for any follow-up events. Here's a back view of the building itself. Due to the site topography, we decided to go with basically a main floor and daylight basement to, so we wouldn't have to bring any fill onto site. This is good, because there's parking in half of the building at the bottom, as well as where we have our locker room, our mechanical room, the backup IT servers, and a fairly good-sized emergency storage area. This is another area in the future, if there would need to ever be expansion, that you could enclose the parking area and make that into workspace. All right. So that's the project that we are talking about. And next is, we'll talk a little bit about the project cost. So back in November, we had, based on the final design drawings, we had a cost estimator give us construction cost, and then of the $19,800,000 construction cost. We also are adding in the various fees that you need to construct a facility, such as the building permit, the system development charges, excise taxes, the administration overview for having owners rep and special inspections to get the project constructed. And then we also added a 5% contingency to the project construction cost, for a grand total of $22,553,600. And so we recognize it, with the current challenge of the construction market and the supply chain concerns, that we will, as we proceed with this project, we would look at some alternate project delivery that could help us control costs during construction. But we won't know the final cost of the project until we go out to bid, but right now, this is our best estimate of what we believe it would cost to construct this project, which is in line with other facilities that have been built around the area for Public Works. Okay? So knowing that we have the project budget, is what we are doing is looking at the allocation of funding. So as I mentioned, the Public Works Department provides support services for many cities' programs. So the project costs were allocated based on program space within the site. As you can see here, is we have on the allocation of funds down the column, and then the equivalent amount, or the share of each of those funds that would be here. So, so within each, there's two funding scenarios that we will be presenting, with several variations. And common to both of the scenarios is an upfront prepayment of $3.6 million from the general fund. The $2.1 million would come from the reserve balance, and the other $1.5 million would come from an inter-fund loan from the water fund. We believe prepaying the general fund share is recommended to help minimize the complexity of outside debt financing, as well as help curtail the long-term debt burden to the general fund. In addition to the prepayment from the general fund, we would recommend a partial prepayment from both the water and the wastewater fund of $2 million each. Thereby, that we would then leave the remainder of $16,442,000 to pursue some outside debt funding. Okay? All right, whoops. There we go, sorry. Okay, so here we go, is funding option scenario number one. So, the numbers that you see here are based on a 2.2% interest rate. The actual amount of interest rate will vary when we go out to shop the debt. And so we have three different scenarios. One is that we just pursue a 10-year loan for the, for the $16,442,000, and that that would give us an annual debt service of $1.8 million that would be shared between water, wastewater, stormwater, and roads operating funds. And as you can see here on the chart, it shows you the proportional share for each of those funds. And we would, basically, this would be a short-term loan, and then set at this annual debt amount for the length, the term of the loan. Okay? And then we have option B1, is where we could parlay some of the money that we are getting from the large pipe, the raw water facility pipe that the program is putting in, the lease payment amount. And so, option 1B, with a partial early payoff of $5.4 million, which would then relieve the debt payment from both the stormwater and the roads fund. Now, the water and the wastewater funds would continue with their annual debt payment to the end of the life of the loan. The advantage of this is it would, by the prepayment, it would lessen the impact to the financially constrained water, stormwater, and roads funds. And then continue the debt service for the wastewater funds. The proposed, well, so as I'd mentioned, so the proposed payoff would come from the raw water pipeline ground lease, where we are expecting a $5,448,357 payoff on July 1 of 2026. And so by using this lump sum payment for the construction of the complex, it could relieve some or all of the debt burden from the user rates for the utilities, as well as help minimize the impact of the gas tax, for which we use those funds to operate and maintain our roads and rideaway. So option, then we have option 1C, which would basically be, take a 10-year loan, and then in 2026, do a full early payoff, using the pipe lease money. So the advantage of this would be that the full debt for the project could be retired, and then there would be no additional impact to user rates, and as well as leaving another $5 million of the pipeline lease money that could be used for other projects. All right? So recognizing that that annual debt burden, especially if you went with option 1A, might be a little challenging for some of the funds, what we did is we also looked at a different scenario of going with a five-year term. So for the five-year term, the numbers that you see on the chart are assumed to be at a 2.25% interest rate.
What do you mean 15-year term?
I'm sorry, what?
You meant 15-year term.
Oh, yeah, what did I say, 50?
Five.
Oh, sorry, 15. Okay, sorry. Okay, thank you. 15-year. So, very similar to the other one, we have three options. One is the no payoff, and as you can see, so the combined annual debt service would be $1.3 million. The advantage of this one is it's a lower annual debt service. It is a longer term, but an annual, a lower annual amount. So then, option 2B would be a partial early payoff with the pipe proceeds. And this, again, we would look at the financially constrained funds of stormwater and roads to pay off their debt, whereas water, wastewater, continue for the term length of the loan. And then option 2C would be to go ahead and do the full payoff for all of the loans and retire the debt, which, I mean, if that is our desire, that this would be a little bit more than the 10-year loan option. So we believe that these two, these two different scenarios are both viable options to fund the Public Works complex, and the use of the big pipe lease payment for these projects make a lot of sense, because the Public Works Core Services have to do with maintaining the rideaway, the roads and rideaways, with that. Additionally, if we were to use the big pipe money, or the ground lease money, to help pay off the debt, that will help reduce the cost of this project from any future user rates. That's a tough one. All right. So, that is all I had for presenting of information, and now I'm open for questions and/or directions.
Thank you, Ms. Kerber. And going back to the opening document on this, so that we can focus our questions, and focus our discussion, basically.
Okay.
Is, we are, we are looking to give direction to the city as to which the count, which of these funding options that have been studied, evaluated, and presented by the city finance department, along with Public Works and others, that we would give you the direction as to which one we think is most preferable. And I see a hand raised by Councillor Lehan, I don't know whose was first, by alphabetical order.
Okay. That's a hard alphabet question, because we're both elves. Okay, I just wanted to ask about the wash facility. I had a question earlier, not on the finance side, but regarding the wash facility, I am presuming, although maybe I missed it, if you said something, that this is recycled and recovered and et cetera, like car washes these days are, where they recycle the water and separate the waste and et cetera, because we have some pretty dirty equipment that come in.
Yeah, so, it isn't always fully recycled, but it definitely is separated before it would be put into the sanitary system. So we have an oil-water separator, as well as another vault in which the contaminants would be, so it wouldn't continue on.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Sure.
Thank you. Councillor Lindell.
Well, this is, this is a question probably for our city manager, perhaps, and I'm just wondering if there were some other plans for the ground lease money coming in, and, you know, if those needed to be used for some other items, such as other roadways for which we do not have funding. So I'm just kind of wondering about, if there's other, if there's, you know, when you make, trying to make a decision about how much, or if we use that money at all, it would be nice to know if there were some other hopes for how that money might be used.
I mean, I'm sure that Zack and engineering would take every dollar of that $17 million for A Road somewhere. This one just made the most sense to staff, because it's about preservation of our assets, and Public Works is responsible for that, and it's directly tied to the intended use, what the money was intended for. But there's really no restrictions on council on how you use that money, it's going to be coming into the, to the general fund, I believe, so there's no restrictions on it, per se. This one just made the most sense, because it's also would have a positive impact on rates, in that we wouldn't have to increase rates by that delta for whatever each fund would be paying for that facility. But even, even if you, if you went with the 10-year one, you'd still have $5 million left to use, however council saw fit. You're not bound in any way, is what I'm trying to say. And yes, there are other projects that would use that money, councillor. So it's really up to you all to decide what's the best use of the funds. This is a proposal from staff, meant to get the conversation going.
And could I ask a related question, and then go to Councillor Wresz, who has his hand up, and then Councillor Agrival? Along those lines, I would like, as I mentioned earlier today, I'd like to hear the thoughts on our ability of this council today to make a determination. to make a determination on some of those funds that certainly the council and city have been working on for many years, but they're not due for another couple of years here, a few years out. So can you advise what you determined there?
Yeah, I mean, essentially, this council can't bind a future council, but you could certainly adopt a resolution. It would allow us to get going. We would start, you know, we would start with the, with everything related to construction at this point because we have a design, correct? So we would go into design, engineering, and then we would start with construction. So you could commit in principle, but you can't bind a future council. And that would be for any project, right? So if the council decided you wanted to do Project X using any funding source, a future council could come in and if the project was half-committed, they could not budget for the remainder. So that's always a possibility, although not very likely. I think once you went down a certain path, I would be surprised if a future council would undo that, but it's certainly possible.
Okay, thank you. Counselor West.
Thank you. I recognize that Public Works plays such an important role for our city. However, I haven't heard us talk at all about the impact of inflation on this construction. I know you mentioned supply chain issues, but I, I would be a little hesitant to want to do anything that would increase utility bills right now. I think people are getting hit where it hurts the most at home. And part of that is we're seeing utility bills increased due to inflationary issues, not just here, of course, in Oregon, but across the country. So that would be a concern that I want to know about. And I also know that, I know that inflation is also going, has really hit hard construction and the cost of construction and the goods necessary to do those jobs. And this facility is beautiful, but it's also very expensive. And there's a reality right now where people are just trying to fill their gas tanks to get to work, and they've seen that double. Food prices have gone up by a third. I mean, these are real issues. And so if it hits people's utility bill at all, that would make me hesitant to want to go down this path. And then I'd like a better idea, if possible, about inflationary concerns and how that impacts the economic outlook for a project like this.
Well, are you talking about inflationary concerns with relates, as regards the project? Because that's not really an inflation issue. That's more of a supply chain, product, product kind of issue. Some of that would involve inflation, I suppose. But it's more of a constraint in prices going up because of supply and demand.
Yeah, so the cost estimates are made or shared with us. For each year that you delay, the project, the cost would, could increase 7%. So if you're talking about delaying the project.
And another thing kind of, go ahead, counselor.
Thank you. I know that there's, yes, as you delay projects, things have, over time, they do get more expensive. However, right now, the cost of goods and construction is exorbitantly high, not only because of supply chain issues, but also because of an inflated currency right now and actual economic pressures with inflation for especially durable goods like construction goods and other things. So that's, and so that actually should be, would probably impact the price right now also, but I don't see that talked about here.
Yeah, well, we have factored in some of that into the cost estimates, and Delora can address that.
Yeah, as I mentioned, so we will be pursuing a alternate type of delivery for the project to help us manage the cost. And you're correct in that whether it's building a road, replacing a water line, you know, all of those, all of our capital projects are being impacted by the current construction climate.
But this would have a constrained budget in that it would be what the estimate is. And so if there is some value engineering that needed to happen, then that would just have to take place within the confines of the way we're constructing the project. So that's always, that's always something that we deal with on every project. The other thing I wanted to mention, the other thing I wanted to mention is that, and it wasn't mentioned tonight, is that the Public Works, some of the facilities are on a temporary use that has been granted. Now, I don't know how many extensions we've received on that.
Three.
Three? So that's another thing that is just an argument for moving forward with the consolidated facility. So that wasn't mentioned, so I thought I would put that in there.
Thank you. I'd like to ask for Council President Opperball to comment.
Thank you. I'm curious if we could go back to the slide. Let's see where we're seeing the different kind of pricing options, scenario one or scenario two. There we go. Okay. So, thank you. This is helpful. And am I correct then in understanding that if we were to use the ground lease lump sum to do this partial or full early payoff, we would be, essentially, we'd be completing the debt, paying back the debt early. So I assume that any of the options that we're looking at then, we're looking at things where there wouldn't be a penalty for early payoff, correct?
That is correct.
And so, okay, good. Because I was kind of thinking too, I mean, as the mayor had comments and questions too about our plans and decisions now and then, you know, what happens with the, in the future in 2026, our ability to make commitments, you know, where is that limited? And how might that work with our loan structure that we put into place? So it's good to hear that there, there wouldn't be a penalty if a payoff was made, but it would also be structured. So if a future council decided to do something, we wouldn't be stuck in a bind, too. Is that correct?
That is correct. That is, you know, either you, 1A or 2A, which is you take the, this is the annual debt burden for the length of the loan, or C where you have the payoff. So, yes, you could go more of the partial, yes.
So there's, there's some flexibility, I guess, that's baked in then as, as time continues. So when we're looking at the difference between scenario one and scenario two, because that is something that we would have to determine from the onset. That's not something that we could flex once it comes down to 2026. So we're looking at a 10-year or a 15-year. We're looking at a difference, let's see, the 10-year, it was, is it 2.20 or 2.25?
So the 10-year is 2.2, the 15-year is 2.25. So the longer loan has a higher interest rate.
Right. So how do those interest rates, I mean, they seem quite similar, but how do those interest rates compare to other debts that the city may expect or, you know, kind of what would be, I know this changes as the market and, you know, everything changes. But how is that compared to what we've looked at in the past or what we would maybe expect to see?
Well, hello, I'm Keith Katkam, the city's finance director. We did do a, kind of a soft RFP, and we went out and talked, and we got some proposals by a few banks to see what, you know, what, and you're kind of right. I mean, we're trying to winnow this down because we're going out to these banks with this really, really flexible options. And it really makes it hard for them, too, to give us, you know, all sorts of rates because they want to know, you know, if you confirm, if you set a 15-year loan with no early payoffs, they're going to give you one rate. But if you, you know, want some early payoffs, they're going to give you a slightly different rate. So basically, the rates that, and they are extremely low because we are, you know, perhaps at the bottom of an interest rate curve. And the other factor to rising construction costs is, you may have heard earlier this week that the Federal Reserve is anticipating three rate hikes this coming year. So interest rates are always the other side of the coin to the construction costs. So certainly locking it in earlier may have beneficial interest rate implications as money is cheap right now. Hard to say what that'll be in three months. I anticipate it'll still be pretty low. But in any case, the short answer to your question is we did do a, we went out for like some, an interest or an informational RFP from some banks on these interest rates.
Yeah, that's interesting, and that's kind of where my mind was going as well because I recognize that the 15-year is slightly higher than the 10-year. However, in context, it's quite low. And perhaps the 15-year, if a future council decided to not do an early payoff scenario, the 15-year gives us a little bit of more of a cushion there, is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
As far as the annual debt service amount?
But you're also paying more interest.
You're paying more interest over the long term, but yeah.
Over a longer time.
You're allowing flexibility of lower interest payment.
I'm sorry, I might, I might have missed you. I was thinking the annual amount for, for each of the funds.
Is lower, yeah. So kind of, you know.
I kind of wonder about that.
What the hope would be, you know, if we can go back out and talk to the banks again, is to give them a, kind of a commitment of to, you know, how much of that future lease payment, $15 million that's coming in July of 2026, would we commit, you know, or soft commit at least, you know, to using, to pay down the debt? And certainly, if we paid it all off, yeah, that would be the, you know, there would be no rate implications at that, at that point going forward. Or if, you know, we mitigate it to partially paying it off, as Delora met, as Delora mentioned, the two funds, particularly the stormwater operating and the road operating, would be our proposed ones that we do an early payoff on, for sure.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And I'm not sure, Counselor Lindvill, if your hand, if you have a new comment or that was the same.
I do, I do have a new comment, Mayor. I, as I look at the, the debt service, even over the short period between now and the early payoff, the debt service really does eat up any savings that we might have in, in the term of the, of the loan. So it seems to me that from, from just looking at it in terms of being fiscally responsible for this facility, that 1C is, I mean, it seems to me to be the preferred scenario. Because even four years of paid-off debt service at $800,000 for four is, it gets us all the way up to, I mean, that's $2 million and, over $2 million. And so I, I don't, you know, I don't think that's reasonable. So that, I just wanted to say that I think that 1C is the preferred under scenario one. And then I have another question, and that has to do with the current facility. And I know that the, the hope would be that that facility would be utilized by the police department who are, have just an awful situation down in the basement of that building. And I'm just wondering if there's any backfill work that would need to be done on that building in order for them to utilize it? And so would be, we be looking at additional costs that, that might have to be incurred in the building for them to move in?
Yeah, I mean, the short answer is yes, and the long answer is coming to you in the public facilities master plan that Delora will be bringing to you in short order.
Okay, okay.
Yes, at, at the very, I'm sorry, at the very least, the building that police and Public Works occupy will need some seismic retrofit in that, plus some additional modifications to better fit their needs.
And there are grant funds that the state has for that purpose. The problem we're having now is that Public Works is not considered first responders. So we have to kind of prorate how much grant money we can get, and it ups our requirement accordingly. But if it was just a dedicated police facility, we could qualify for a much larger grant.
Well, I, and that's good to know. That's good information to know. The other thing about 1C that seems preferable to me is that leaves, it leaves us almost $5.5 million that the city can do, you know, use for alternative projects. So I like that idea as well.
Thank you, Counselor Lindvill. Thank you for everyone's comments. And I wanted to, you know, let's ask us all to think back to at least two other very in-depth presentations about the Public Works facility and our police facility, which I, I actually was in that basement area on a brief tour on, what day was it, Thursday? With some holiday cookies, I took over to the Public Works department and took a little brief tour with some of the staff downstairs. And I think it's very important to think about, this is, you know, we just got our population estimate. We're a city of 27,000 people. We have all kinds of families. We have dynamic growing businesses, small businesses, some pretty significant businesses. We're right on I-5. And I'm stating the obvious, but there is an expectation, a serious expectation that we do the right thing by our citizens with regard to emergency management and public works. And so this is a, not a knife to have. And while it does cost a large number of dollars to build a building like this, in those in-depth presentations that we had, I am confident that this is not a building that has any frills in it. I'm sure whenever you do value engineering, I just finished working on some teams with some really large projects, and we did a lot of value engineering. So I'm sure there's things that you have to do going forward. But I, I believe the questions we asked in the earlier presentations that went in depth about the building gave me the impression that we're starting with a responsible plan and we're taking, I believe, four scattered sites with, with old buildings that are not anywhere near seismicly ready. They require trucks to come and go from different roads. When we have an emergency, we're having to handle it in a far less than ideal manner because of our, our lack of having a center for our Public Works department. And even with, if you're not talking about an emergency, you're talking about handling our roads and our streets in a, in a responsible way going forward for all of our residents. And this is the plan that has been, been being developed for years. I also think about, I agree, we need to be responsible and we need to think about the rate payers. And that's something I've been thinking about all the way along. And I hear Counselor Lindvill, I hear Counselor Opperball in their comments tonight and also earlier, asking those kinds of questions so that we have a financing plan that takes into account the fact that we need to come into the more modern way of managing, the safer, more responsible way of managing our Public Works facilities with a financing plan that makes the most sense for all concerned. And randomly waiting a few years to see what happens in a few years doesn't, that's not, that doesn't tell us, you know, that, that could be, that could be a very irresponsible thing because we don't know what's happening in the next few years either. So we have to do the best with what information we have today. So I'm interested, I also believe that 1C appears to be the best option. I do understand what Counselor Opperball was talking about, that there could be some advantages for, for 2B. And hearing our finance director talk about going back and having more conversations with the banks to see, you know, if you can improve that a little bit. But what we, what we seem to be hearing is that money is going to cost even more in the next couple of years. And our, our police facility is not going to get any better all by itself in the basement of that building. None of these things are going to get better by themselves. And I appreciate the location that we have near the other facilities. There's lots of efficiencies built into there. They use the terrain, designed it very efficiently so that they don't have to bring in fill. So, and those are some of the things that I'm thinking about. So with all of those comments, Delora and Keith and Delora, um, and Keith and, and finance, what are you hearing?
I'm, I'm, I'm hearing a preference for one C. I don't know if, if Delora's hearing anything different, but also with a, a request for staff to follow up and refine some of the financing options. But, um, one C, one C offers the lowest interest rate, so I, I think the concern is the interest rate, so we can see what we can do on, further shoring up those, uh, estimates on the interest rates.
Okay, and I have one more comment I wanted, or like question I had. Delora, when you talk about, um, the different funds that are related to all this, from where we would draw the money, which is the most responsible way to do this, um, you mentioned the gas tax. And I guess I, that, the gas tax is coming into the roads operating fund, correct? And then that is some of the important money that we need to use to improve our roads. So the reason you want to free that up earlier is because that is, that's one of the funds that we don't want to impact if we go away, is that right?
We're talking about the road operating fund. Gas tax is statu-
Road operating fund.
Yeah, the, the gas tax is statutorily required to be used for street maintenance only.
Uh, you're thinking of a road maintenance fee.
I'm talking about the, the state shared revenue? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah. So, so gas tax is dedicated for road, um, road projects.
Right.
We have a road maintenance fee that can only be used for, uh, rehabilitation of, of projects, but for building any new roads or major rehabilitation of roads, the, the road, uh, operating, which is funded by gas tax, is the only option that you have. Plus, we use that money to take care of the streets. So, so the re-striping, the signage, the maintenance of the right of way, all of that is coming out of road operating, which is funded from gas tax.
Okay, and if we, because our conditional uses for these locations that we have now have been going on for so long, and, and the buildings themselves are going to be probably requiring maintenance if we, if we don't do anything for some period of time, can you just close out by talking about the implications of doing nothing?
Uh. Well.
Boy, that was a, that drew a laugh.
Well.
But I just, I just want, I just want to hear about that a little bit. We talked about it a couple of meetings, several different meetings ago about this, and I just wanted to, to hear about, if we do nothing, what, what do we have?
Okay, so, so if you do nothing, we will continue to be scattered all over the city. And as you've seen over the last couple of years, when we have an emergency in town, I mean, we are not the most efficient because things are all, literally all over the town. So, I mean, uh, I, I, I guess our, our efficiency will just continue to, to, you know, keep degrading over time, is the reality, is because, I, I don't know, well, you, I don't know if any of you have toured like our operations building, but, but my staff don't, they don't even have real cubicles. They have little tables. We are very crammed where we are, uh, for staffing. And when it comes to equipment, um, we're even over at our administration building, we fit as many vehicles as we can in the back parking lot, but we have a good number of them that are in the front parking lot that impacts the community center. By doing nothing, uh, the, the police department will, will be, will suffer. They, their conditions, which are even more dismal than ours, will just continue to be. Um, I was talking with the chief today. He, he's a little concerned about where is he going to put his community health officer? You know, where, where will they be able to have private, secure conversations? So, um...
I, I think the, the bigger one is the seismic vulnerability. We know that that building is seismically not going to withstand, um, a very large earthquake. And if you're talking about one department in our city that needs to be active up and running and out on the street, it's, it's public works, um, and police. So if we could get public works out of there, then we could retrofit that building seismically so that the police are also protected to the extent that you can protect something for a, a massive earthquake, but certainly way better than, than that building is right now. So just from an emergency response standpoint, that's probably the biggest one. The efficiencies and, and having to go to different yards for different materials, those are all things that we, you know, we could cobble, cobble along if we needed to, but it's just not efficient. And there's, there's time wasted and money wasted by not being sent, um, centralized in one location.
And one thing that wasn't mentioned in this meeting, because we're trying to talk about a lot of things, is the management of the actual equipment that we use for our roads that would be managed in this one facility, um, in the central facility. And if we don't do anything, I imagine we're going to have to continue to maintain the scattered facilities in addition to the public work, the public works building.
That's correct.
So it's not like there's a way to not spend anything. And I'm, the reason I think this makes sense to do this right now is, it's already been delayed for several years. We've been investing time and funds in planning it. We've found the necessity for it, and the, the actual cost to do it is only going to increase. So this looks to me like the most reasonable time to do this with respect to managing our costs. Well, thank you. Any, um, I see, oh, I see three hands up. Councilor Lee here.
The other two were ahead of me, but I don't care. Okay, I'll go. Um, uh, I was just going to say, these are the issues that are, that when it comes down to it, are the most important to our constituents. And if any year proved this out, it was this last year. These are all issues, the, um, roads, water, stormwater, uh, uh, sewer, whatever, that people just ignore most of the time because it doesn't impact them and they don't want it to impact them. But when something goes wrong, then they look to their local government to fix it. And that's when they're looking to public works to step up and be there for them. And, um, so, uh, I mean, this is more important really than anything else we do because this supports everything else that we are as a community. So, um, so I'm, I'm good with going forward with this as quickly as we can and, um, as efficiently as we can. I would go with the one, the one, whatever that was, one C, something, I don't know. Now, it's not up on the screen, so I've forgotten it, but, uh, the fact was.
Thank you. Okay, Councilor Russ.
I, I, and I don't disagree with anything that's been said. Yes, it's a need. Yes, uh, it's important. Yes, it's a major function of local government that we have to have. And, and I'm remembering this off the top of my head, so I could be wrong with this number. Please correct me if I am. I know we got staff in the building. It was my understanding in a previous, um, presentation that the price tag was around seventeen million. If I resaw correctly on one of these slides, twenty-two million. Maybe there's a couple of things that are tidied up in there, but that's a, that's a chunk where I think where it's gone up. I am concerned right now because we are in a different dynamic than we have been, and we are with record rising construction cost and a record rising labor cost and supply chain issues. And these expensive economic times that we're in are concerning to me when we look at a giant project like this. And I'm not saying don't build it. That's not what I'm saying. But I have great hesitancy and questions around the economics of this and how it impacts our community with the price tag. I just, and I think, and I am concerned that the price tag we're seeing is going to actually be much higher based on these factors that we're living through right now. So that's where my concern comes from. I don't, I'm not saying don't build it. I'm not saying that Public Works isn't vital and a major function of local government. It's not what I'm saying, but I am really concerned about the cost being even greater than what, um, we're being shown, so.
It sounds like that's something that we should also hear about maybe in the next session. Um, more on that. Um, good points. Uh, Councilor Lindville?
Well, I, I just wanted to say that I don't believe we're gonna, we're gonna see two-point-two percent interest anytime in the future. Um, I think we all know that's going to go up. So the sooner we get this taken care of, the more money that we save the, um, the city. So, um, I think delaying, uh, when you say what happens if we do nothing, well, obviously, the, the cost of all of this is going to go up.
Right.
Um, and, and the other thing I wanted to say is that I don't think, I mean, I've been down, let me just say, I, I have supervised a certified police force. Uh, and, and I understand the need for the kind of, uh, detention and interviewing facilities that a police force for a city our size should have, as well as to have new services for, um, uh, mental health or for, um, uh, physical abuse situations. Um, I, I, I'm appalled at, frankly, at what our police department has, has to manage. Um, in, I mean, they literally have to take people through the office areas to get them into, uh, interview rooms. And, um, and they're not, and they're not good interview rooms in that they don't have the kind of technology and facility. We don't have, um, uh, storage, you know, for a pro- a, a, a very proper property room. So, um, I, I think this is a two-part scenario. One is, is public works, which has great needs, but I think the other great need is for, um, our police department. And, uh, we, we don't have the ability for the public to come and interface with our police in a facility that, um, really represents the city well. And so I think that's a great need that we have as well.
Thank you, Councilor Lindville. And, and just, um, we, I mean, know we need to go to the other point, the other, uh, two items on our council work session. But, um, the, the fact that the city has been very good at financing things and, uh, developing excellent financing plans over time gives me confidence that they will manage this well to the best of our ability. We want to hear more about it to make sure we're as responsible as possible, and we hear that there are some of the contingencies already built into the budget. And I really like the fact that once we vacate that police department, bill, or vacate public works and start focusing on that, that particular project is eligible for funding that this one is not. So again, we can, we can use creative and, um, and innovative financing to continue to work on keeping our costs down and our services good. So thank you very much, and I think we are ready to move on to the next item. Thank you, Ms. Kerber. And we'll now hear, um, from Mr. Rappold on Clackamas County Climate Action Plan.
Thank you.
Oh.
Remotely.
My video, so I don't do anything. All right. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Carrie Rappold, Natural Resources Manager. So tonight I just want to give you a very brief overview of the planning process for Clackamas County's Climate Action Plan. As you know, uh, for fiscal twenty-one, twenty-three, uh, developing a climate action strategy in alignment with Clackamas County's planning efforts was identified. And so I just want to walk you through very briefly, um, what's, what's happening with their process, how the city is involved with it, and how we'll also have future opportunities to be involved, um, at this level as well as at the community level. So the county wants to develop a plan that, uh, by twenty-twenty-three, um, is adopted. And so they're about, ooh, close to about a year into this process at this point. And, um, they want to reach a goal of being carbon neutral by twenty-fifty. And this has been adopted by the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners. So their plan looks at, uh, like I said, having this carbon neutrality by twenty-fifty, developing resilience and adaptation that will allow them to achieve the goals that are in the plan. It's based on a thirty-year planning horizon, which will be developed or divided into these two-year implementation plans, uh, that they'll identify within the plan. It has a county-wide scope, and what's important is they're looking for these opportunities to partner with the cities that are within Clackamas County. And I'll talk a little bit more about, um, the city's work group that I am a representative on. Um, if you're interested, there's a link here that takes you to their, uh, site. It's, uh, it's pretty easy to follow as far as, you know, what, uh, they've developed so far, what they'll be looking to develop. So you have this in your package. Basically, it's a six-step, uh, phase, or six-step process, or six phases. They're currently through phase two in terms of, um, they've done this discovery work. I'm going to show you a little bit of the data that they've gathered to date. That goes back, actually, some of that work to twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen. And then they're working on these criteria and basically a draft strategy. And, um, as part of this, they're, they're doing their feedback process, which they've started, which will go through next year. And there's basically three groups that they're engaging with at this point. There's a climate advisory group that's made up of community members. There's also a youth advisory group. And then there's the group that I sit on, which is called the city's work group. I believe they've also had some discussions with the C-four committee, um, where this information has been distributed and discussed. And then basically they'll move into the refinement process, and that will develop the, the plan that they will provide for comment. And then, um, they'll have their adoption process that will occur sometime later next year into the fall. And then they'll move into the implementation phase of getting the, the project, um, done over the, you know, that time horizon. So I just wanted to spend a little bit of time, they, basically, we've had two meetings. One was just basically an introductory meeting where everybody got to know each other. They talked about their planning process. And in the second meeting, they actually walked us through some of the data they collected. And so, as you know, there's a number of different greenhouse gases such as carbon dioxide, nitrous oxide, methane, um, fluorinated gases that are of a concern in terms of climate change and those gases collecting in the atmosphere. And so basically with their inventory, they were looking at things from an operational and a community perspective. And so when you, when you look at this, there's basically three scopes in terms of direct, and then those two indirect inputs as far as greenhouse gases. So this just gives you an idea of the work they did with their consultants, um, looking at all their operations in terms of what they're responsible for, whether those are facilities, um, their fleet, and the energy that is required to run those. And as you can see, which is something that comes out very clearly in this process, which I'm sure would be reflected if we did this type of inventory for Wilsonville, is that the major source really is the supply chain in terms of procurement. And it's all the various items that, you know, an organization would use. And so there's a lot of energy that is certainly used to create those products and is captured in that process. So that's going to be, you know, a challenge in some respects when you're looking at, you know, a source like that. But there's a lot we can do certainly, you know, in regards to how we go about procuring products and what we choose as part of that process that could have, you know, benefit. But there's a lot, you know, certainly we can do in terms of that scope one. That's the direct, um, you know, things that we do in terms of our fleet, the types of cars that we use, types of vehicles. And then there's the energy that we purchase in terms of scope two. And then there's this other category of indirect and scope three. In terms of the community, um, this, this can be a little bit more challenging in terms of how they collect that data. Um, a lot of times they have to use, you know, outside sources as far as like PGE, Northwest Natural, um, you know, and it's kind of be a little, it's a little bit more generalized in some respects in terms of how they've collected that. But they look at these various sources in terms of buildings, transportation, waste, industry and refrigerants, household consumption, air travel, and upstream energy production. So the one thing I would note, because I'm going to show you one more table or pie chart, is that that last group of items where it starts with household consumption, you'll see that that comes out very large in terms of, um, what we see as far as the, the results of that inventory. So like I mentioned, that, that item on the left, imported consumption, represents those last three categories. And it makes up, you know, almost a half of what you see in terms of the greenhouse gases. So all of this is measured in metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent. So that equivalent actually takes into account methane, nitrous oxide, and those fluorinated gases. Basically, they converted it to carbon. Well, the county, you know, fortunately is actually a little bit below, or it is below that U.S. average. It's certainly above, you know, the global average. But really, the intent is to have that at zero if you're going to try to achieve carbon neutrality. So the most meaningful thing is that you have to really, you know, base this on looking at where you're at as far as a benchmark at the beginning and where you end up. And in their case, you know, where would they be in terms of 2015, or 2050 in terms of that carbon neutrality? So like I said, I'm, I'm part of the city's work group. I believe there's 11 members. It's made up of various cities within Clackamas County. And we're taking it, taking a look more at, you know, from the organizational level as well as the community level. But as I mentioned, there's those two other advisory groups, the climate advisory group and the youth advisory group that are weighing in at that community level. Basically, we're going to be looking for ways that we can connect and support each other in terms of what Clackamas County is doing, but also supporting, you know, the other cities in terms of this effort. And so there's been two meetings to date. I expect there will be at least two to three that will occur yet. So one of the important things is I wanted to just touch base with you tonight and just give you a brief overview. But I will be coming back in the future, and I'll probably need more specific guidance in regards to how do we actually want to participate in this process? You know, some of the options are we could just go ahead and adopt the county's plan, or we could develop our own plan, or we could share elements of what's in their plan. So there'll be some questions that I'd like to bring back to you. Clackamas County is actually formulating some of those questions. And so I expect early next year, I'll probably have another work session where I can come to you and get some specific, you know, input at that point. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Rappold. And I, I know that Clackamas County has some information that they've been updating on their website about the Climate Action Plan, and you probably have some other current information. So we would get something, I'm thinking so that we can have the most meaningful discussion with you on that, we would get some material in advance to read. And if any of the councilors wanted to spend time one-on-one with you to kind of delve into that and see areas that they'd like to amplify, could we do that?
Yes, certainly. I, I welcome that opportunity if you want to spend some individual time, and I would, you know, endeavor to provide you as much information as possible.
Okay, thank you very much. Oh, Councilor Oquro.
Thank you. I'm curious, as information is presented within the Clackamas County group and, and work that's being done there, if it is like disaggregated by areas within Clackamas County or are we just looking at Clackamas County as a whole? Because of course, you know, I think maybe some of the, Clackamas County covers a wide area with different types of cities that have different types of industries and different densities, you know, all sorts of things, right? And so I'm, I'm curious if there is a way that we can get information that's maybe even more targeted to Wilsonville as we're looking at the question of do we want to adopt Clackamas Counties or, you know, do some sort of add-on? Or how does that overlap with what our own view of a plan for Wilsonville looks like? So I was just curious if, if that information might be coming out through the process and if that could be shared with us as well?
Yeah, my understanding, it's a good question, is that it's aggregated. That's the problem when looking at the, like those results I showed at the community level. And so they, they've actually mentioned that it would be difficult to like, kind of parse it out so it's at like a city level, the various cities that. So it's likely that if we're looking to get that type of information ultimately, we'd probably have to do our own inventory that would be specific. But it would also, you know, having that county information would be a good comparison then if we provide that opportunity.
Do you think other, is there other data sets out there that may be bound by different, I guess, kind of, maybe not specific to Wilsonville, but maybe specific to more like the suburban type community that Wilsonville is?
I'd have to look into that. I'm, I'm actually kind of learning some of this myself, too.
Sure.
And I, I could, I could actually, I think I, I could talk to the county representatives. They, they've spent years on this, and so I, I think they'd have a good idea. I know some of this information was produced in terms of a, a model basically that DEQ has. And I don't know how it parses that out either in terms of what level you can get down to in that, but I could speak to the county about that.
Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm just curious, you know, as, as we look at trying to meet plans and, and really examine what makes sense for our city as a self, like, you know, how, how accurate can we get?
No, it's a great question. It was actually asked in one of the meetings, too, so.
Okay.
I think that's a really good question. I mean, Councilor Oquro is an absolute expert in, she probably wouldn't say it herself, but she focuses on this area of data analytics and such a great gift to bring to our council. And so I, I wonder if part of what you might be thinking, or maybe I could just add another comment here, is so what's unique about Wilsonville that's different from all the other cities in Clackamas County and unincorporated areas and non-cities that are across this county, agricultural areas? You know, we have our, our transportation system that is very unique. We have a bike, pretty robust bike and ped options, things that we're working on. We have some, you know, our plans of town center and so forth. So is there a way to look at what we're already doing to get, to build on that momentum and sort of take advantage of some of the things that we're already doing and that we already have so that we can get the biggest impact? We can make the biggest impact based on what we have here. Is that kind of what you're getting at, Councilor Oquro?
Yeah, I think so. You know, and if we want to try to move the needle, it, different behavior changes may have a bigger impact in a community like Wilsonville than another community that is more rural, just because of how people live, right? So I think that would be good information for us to have if we're going to draft something that actually creates meaningful, you know, change or an outcome that, that makes a difference. So, yeah.
Yeah, I think that could fall into two categories. It could be, you know, certainly part of that inventory in terms of the transportation aspect, but then the strategies that, you know, would be embedded within that plan.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rappold. Seeing no further hands, no more hands raised on this, we have time to go now to the City Hall renovation project with Mr. Montalvo. Does that sound good? I heard somebody say something.
Uh, good evening.
There he is.
Let me remove the previous presentation and get mine loaded up. Uh, where is the share screen button? That's what I'm saying, there's like three zooms going on here. Okay. Pardon us, we're just having some technical issues.
There it is, massive.
All right, thank you. So I think Zoe is going to help me here with navigation and, so Martin Montalvo, Public Works Operations Manager. I'm going to be giving you just a quick presentation on the City Hall renovations project. So just a quick overview of background, then we'll go into just some of the design components, and then talk about the publicly bid contract that we'll be getting, or asking for approval for this evening. Next slide, please. So you're all aware of the damages that occurred last summer. We had a damage from the most expensive ice maker in the history of time that basically started a leak on a Friday evening on the second floor of City Hall, damaged most of the customer service locations on the second floor. Leaked down to the first floor, damaged the ceilings, the walls, and also the customer service components of the first floor of City Hall. Next slide, please. So with that, we took the opportunity to say, well, we're going to have to do some major renovations. We're going to have to do some major, just repairs and mitigation. Is this the right time to do some targeted improvements for our customer service experience with the mindset of increasing efficiency, increasing security, both physical and health security for our staff? And then just restore the back of the house for the non-customer service components of the buildings to their pre-loss condition? So that was our goal. With that, next slide, please. We've come up with a very targeted design for improvements for the front of the house for the first floor. So I'll point out just some key components for you. This is our new design for the front counter of the first floor with the Community Development Apartment and Court utilizing most of this. We have a bi-level design. The bi-level design allows us to provide a lower tier ADA accessible work experience and customer service experience for our customers on the left-hand side. This is the side that is closest to our public parking lot, also closest to our ADA accessible doors, our elevator. So we basically tier up the customer that needs that type of service to come right up here, step up to the table, roll up to the table, and meet with any one of our customer service providers. What you can't see in this detail is that there are actually two separate computer stations that are accessible to a staff person and to a customer that wants to utilize the sitting format for their interaction. The other right-hand side of our waterfall feature basically sets us up for a standing workstation scenario with three different interaction counters for a customer and a staff person to interact and provide those services. We've pushed back the actual staff seating areas closer to the rear of the wall, allow for a better circulation pattern and better security aspects for our staff to be able to move around that area, be able to have some distance from a customer that's approaching the counter until they can identify what that individual needs in terms of services. We've also realigned the two structural pillars. If you, if you come into City Hall now, you'll realize there are actually three pillars. The center pillar in the current design is non-structural, and it kind of creates an impediment for flow as well as for sightline. We've realigned these two structural pillars, more of an angle to give you a better sightline at the doors for our staff that are back at their workstations to be able to see who comes in and out of the building. We've also provided updated city logo that'll be backlit with LED behind the wainscoting wood panel at the back. A new color pattern on the rear wall and a new color pattern for the counter and work surfaces. All of these are durable, maintainable, cost-effective options that we've provided. Next slide, please. So we've carried that design over into the renovations that we're going to propose for the second floor. This is our finance department, utility billing department. You'll notice, you know, the most striking feature is the city logos. We've got a blaze there in the center. That's also our ADA accessible counter. We have new countertops on the standing workstations that kind of follow the pattern that we described downstairs. We've pushed staff a little further back into the work alcove areas to create that safety, security distance. And in all of the designs, you'll notice that we've included the shield components that we fabricated in the last year and a half ad hoc in response to COVID. This is more of a, a design and structured component to it, and it's also reversible. So these components can come down if the world ever returns to normal and we decide we don't want to have these as a full feature. We can remove them from the countertops, place some cap features on the insertion points, and it's relatively flush to the pre-penetration condition. Next feature, thank you. So for this project, we did have to follow the formal bidding process. The initial estimates all indicated the repairs were going to be over $100,000, which by Oregon procurement rules and the city's procurement rules required us to go to a public bid. The bid per our insurer needed to be two parts. One, to do a base bid or the pre-loss condition, basically to take you back to what it was. So that's the base bid. And then the improvements had to be bid as a separate additive component. So the total project cost is based on the base bid plus the improvements, and that's how the bid was let out publicly. The bid was open on November 10th. We had three bidders. With all bids, we have a seven-day period to review the bids to make sure there aren't any discrepancies, any issues. During that seven-day period, we noted a significant discrepancy in the low bidder. Oregon procurement rules deem that to be non-responsive, so we had to deem the low bidder non-responsive, and we had to throw their bid out. So the contract that you see before you this evening is for 2KG contractors, and they were the second low bid, but they were the first responsive bidder. So these are the bids that we received for the project, for base bid, alternative bid, and then the total bid. As you'll see, there was a bid from Art Cortez Construction. Overall total bid, they were the low bid, but they were deemed to be non-responsive. Non-responsive basically indicated that they requested a change in their bid after the bids were open, and we're not allowed to do that. So we had to go to the second low bid, which is 2KG Contractors. You may be familiar with these contractors. They did the recent renovations a few years ago to the library and did, you know, a good job for the city. So that's the contract you have before you this evening. I will point out, Buildscape LLC came in at a bid of $138,249 for the base bid. So our insurer has indicated, and they told us this when, when we went to bid, they will reimburse us for the full value of the minus our deductible of $5,000 of whatever the base bid that we received during the public bidding process. So in terms of total reimbursement that we will get from our insurer, it will be the $138,249 minus our deductible. The next table, we'll go into more detail with that. Next table. So these are the total project costs. Last October, you approved a supplemental budget amendment to help us capture the costs that we anticipated for the project. So that was $279. CIS anticipated reimbursing us $93,000. City's portion of that was going to be $185 for a total project cost of $279. So now that we actually have the bids in, we know what things are going to cost. Later this evening, you have a item on your agenda for a budget amendment that incorporates the additional funds needed to complete the renovations based on the bids that we received. So the supplemental project, supplemental budget that you'll receive this evening will cover the $243,966 that's needed for design and construction. CIS is going to give, is going to contribute another $39,847 to get us to that base bid price. City's total portion will then be $204,119. The column on the right is total project cost. So total project cost, all-in, $522,966. CIS total contribution will be $133,249. The city's all-in cost of what we have to cover will be $389,717. That gets us to our pre-loss condition in the back of the house, and then all of the targeted improvements that we'd like to do in the front of the house for the customer service component. Next slide, please. So there, the consent, or the items for you, there's two options, approval of the upgrades and modifications. That includes a recommended alternatives. Our next steps would be to issue a notice to proceed on December 27th to the responsive bidder. And then we would have a substantial completion date of April 2nd with a final completion date of April 22nd. The alternative is reject the item that's before you this evening, and then we would go back to the pre-loss condition bidder. That would require us at least another 30 days to come back, negotiate contract terms to get back to the pre-loss condition with the responsive low bidder for the pre-loss. We would anticipate issuing notice We would anticipate issuing notice to proceed around January 21st, with a substantial completion date to be determined. Staff's recommendation is approval of the upgrades and modifications as presented for you this evening. That concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to take any questions you might have.
Councilor West.
Okay, thank you, Your Honor. Question. Can we go back to that slide, or can you share that slide that talked about city's portion? I just, I want to make sure I'm not confused. And then it talked about total cost. You had the date, like, from October to December.
Yep.
It was one of the last ones.
Um.
That one?
Yep.
I think that's it, yes. Thank you. Just help me under, I just want to make sure I understand this. So we're looking at this here, back in October 21, it was estimated before we got bids in that the city's portion would be 185K-ish. On today, our portion is 204K-ish, a little bit more based on the bids that we got in. Are we, oh, I'm still not understanding how our out-of-pocket expense...
I think the most, more important is to focus on the totals. So the design and construction total, all in, that includes the architectural services and the construction services, will be $522,966. You had approved a budget amendment for $279 in October. Now we know what CIS's final contribution will be, which will be $133,249. So the all-in cost for the city is the $389,717.
That number is a lot more. It's really pretty, what was designed. However, I, I don't know if it's, I don't know, that price tag bothers me. Like, that's, I, it's, I don't know if I'm comfortable with that kind of increase. I mean, I'm sounding like a broken record here from my last concerns, but that's a big increase, and, you know, it looks beautiful, and it's really nicely upgraded, but I don't, I'm not convinced that that price tag, that it's more than either a one.
Could I ask a related question that might be kind of the same thing? Mr. Montalvo, when you talked about if we rejected this and we went back to the pre-lost conditions, do you mean that we would just build the...
We would build it back to what it was before.
The same barriers that we had, where you walk in, so it would look pretty much exactly like it did?
That's my question also.
So it would go back...
That's where we would go. And I think maybe because we have done this in different meetings, I wonder if, and I understand that tonight was a financial presentation, if you could, Mr. Montalvo, or city manager, whoever on the team wants to talk about what that change really means? What are we getting when we're buying the change where people coming in the door can see the people at the desk, the people at the desk can see who's coming in, and they can respond to the public in a certain way? And also, what is the lifespan of this building? How long will it be, you know, I don't know, I hope it's 20 or 30 years.
So I, and I understand your concerns.
What are we getting?
Yeah, I understand your concerns on the cost, and I'll point out some of the key components that are contributing to the cost, and it's a lovely design. I will be the first to agree with you. But the key components are the structural parts, the things that you don't necessarily see. So the restructuring of the weight-bearing beams, so getting that sightline, which has always been an issue. If you recall, about three, four years ago, the building official brought you a project to try and achieve the same thing, and the price tag was similar to what we're facing with today. So you would realign those structural beams to give you a better sightline for our staff that are working behind the counter as far as someone coming into the building. What you don't see is, in the soffit between those two beams are roll gates that we close down in the evenings. Those roll gates that are currently there would not be there, they would have to be replaced, and that's a significant cost. And what those do is they provide a security for the building when you're having council meetings, when you're having a planning commission meeting, and after-hours meeting that we can close off that area and not be concerned about someone going back into the staff areas when that area is unattended. The other components that cost some significant cost is the soffit work and the support work for not just the front security gate, there's two side gates that come back into those customer areas. Those were the cost overruns that we saw when we sat down with the bidders and we said, why was it, why was it so much more than we estimated? And there's, there's all the other inflationary factors that we're dealing with, in addition to these are expensive items. The materials that we've chosen are not necessarily, you know, they're not the lowest grade, they're not the highest grade. We went very modest, very durable. All of the countertops that are at our current customer service facilities were due for replacement in the next few years, just from their normal wear and tear. The countertops that you're seeing here, you'll get a 20- to 30-year lifespan on these countertops. They're not wood. They're not, you know, the highest-end product out there. They're a manufactured product that will give us a 20- to 30-year lifespan. But that's what you're seeing prevalent in public facility designs. Durable, quality products that you can maintain, that will last the lifespan of the facility. Those were the significant overruns that we saw. Are there opportunities to value engineer a few things through here? It could be done. What we think we've brought forward for you, while the price is an increase, it's a modest and durable design. I think I've worked with all you long enough, and you've known me long enough, I don't like to build anything that I can't maintain. And this is something that I hope and think that for our community and for our staff provides a lot of new amenities, gives them a sense of security, a sense of safety, and that as the facilities and Public Works Department, I can maintain this.
And one other feature I may, I believe I remember, right now when you walk into the building, tell me, or correct me if I'm wrong, you kind of walk around the corner into the building, and there is a place for somebody to sit. I believe there's a table scooted up if somebody needs to sit and they're not able to stand. So we're using kind of a, something we've put together that accomplishes that. This seems to have it built in.
Yeah, you're absolutely correct. So on the far right-hand side in the planning desk, we've got a six-foot table that we butt up against the countertop to create that social distance for the staff person and the customer. We've incorporated that into the counter designs so that you don't have to have an ad hoc table incorporated there. These also allow you to open up full plan sets and review the plans with the customer while they're there, if it's your meeting with a design professional, or just a mom and pop that come in and want to get a quick permit. The other components...
It's seven o'clock?
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. I interrupted you.
No, I'm sorry, I was doing my train of thought. You had a question?
No, I just interrupted. I was going to say it's seven o'clock, and Counselor Lee Han has a comment. I'd like to hear from Counselor Lee Han, and then see if we are ready to give direction here, or do we need more time? So Counselor Lee Han.
This is a beautiful design, but that's not the reason we're doing it. It isn't because it's pretty, or it's not pretty. It, when we built this back in '01, '02, we were in the midst of planning for this when 9/11 happened. And everything shifted then, design-wise, to try to protect the back of the building from the front of the building, and to change the security thing in a world of, I don't know what terrorist might walk in the building. And we did the best we could with the information we had, but, and I think it has functioned pretty well. But there's nothing like 20 years of time and use to show you what could be better, what we could have done better, and what now we need to do better for other situations like pandemics and accessibility, et cetera, that we can do these things better. And we now have the experience of time to know how we can do those things better. So this is, it would be a mistake, in my opinion, to take an opportunity like this where we have to do a major remodel, through no fault of our own, and not take advantage of it to upgrade those situations, those functional things, that now, 20 years later, we know how to do them better, and we've learned a lot in 20 years. So that's, I'm looking at the function piece, and that this is just an opportunity that presented itself, and we should take advantage of it when we can. My opinion. There you go.
Thank you, Counselor Lee Han. And we want to give direction to our staff. Are you giving, it sounds like we're hearing from Counselor Lee Han to go ahead.
Mayor, it's on consent agenda, so...
Do I hear from...
It's on consent, but I'm a no vote on it right now.
So what you would...
I know that we didn't like what we had last time. Like, it wasn't the prettiest thing, but it was functional for a municipal building.
What you would do at the regular meeting is, when you go to approve consent, any member of council can have a consent item removed. So when you get to consent, Counselor West can make his objection and ask that it be removed from consent and placed under new business item. It would become new item number 20, and then everything would shift from that.
I will be, I will do that.
Okay. Counselor Lee Han, I see your hand up, but maybe it's not really...
No, 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 I just, I didn't, I didn't get it lowered.
Okay, so thank you. I think we've got what we need. We can discuss this again at the next, later in the meeting. And with that, I'm going to adjourn the council work session, and we will reconvene in seven minutes. Meeting adjourned at 7:06 PM.